So, once again, it's the Red Hook Town Board Meeting, Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me on this flag day to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you all very much. This is the first meeting of the month. And tonight's agenda for the folks watching at home, we will have the supervisors' report. That's a monthly statement of the finances, as well as clerk's report. We do have a public hearing that was set on potential agreement with Spectrum on a continuing contract. We are going to open that public hearing, but we're going to extend it to next month as we're still awaiting some comments back from Spectrum, so that'll be very brief. Any public comments? Then, for the agenda, we'll be discussing housing needs. We also have a resolution that's slightly modified from our previous month to apply for COVID Cares Act funding. We have an update on that application. We approved changes to the local law for open meetings to bring it up to speed with changes that came out of Albany very recently. Now, we have a resolution to approve a policy for our boards as well. A little bit of discussion. We still have some time on consolidated funding opportunities, grant opportunities, and then adjournment will probably be going into attorney-client session at the end of the meeting. Okay, very good. So I'm going to bounce around for a moment, and we are going to go to announcements. Just have a couple of quick announcements before we get to the supervisors' report. First of which is that early voting starts on Saturday, June 18th. It's hard to imagine it's that time of year again, but for primaries. And there is a primary, I believe, in both the Democratic and the Republican lines, at least for governor. And so, early voting, if you recall, happens in this part of Dutchess County at the Rhinebeck Town Hall. It starts on Saturday, June 18th, and it's from 9:00 to 5:00 with the exception of Tuesdays and Thursdays. It runs from 12:00 to 8:00. We'll put that up on the website tomorrow. But we do want to let you know that, in fact, there's early voting happening. Also, we got word from Winnicke that our Sawkill Trail has been included in the Greenway Trail system, and that was good news as well. Okay, that's all I have for announcements. Let's go right into the supervisors' report. This is accounting for the period ending May 31st, 2022. We started the month with an opening balance of $10,266,384, or seats of 829,000 or so, dispersments of $1,338,323, ending balance of $9,757,005. You have also budget adjustments that have been prepared by our bookkeeper and Conway. In addition to that, we have your monthly variance report. Are there any questions, board members, about the reports or the budget adjustments? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the supervisors' report.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilperson Hamel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia Solomon, all in favor, Jacob Testa.
Aye.
And myself. Christine Kane will be joining us in just a few minutes. We also have the town clerk's monthly report, Deanna, and some notification of minor corrections to a previous resolution. If you would be kind enough to let the folks know.
The town clerk's report for May 1st to May 31st, 2022, the total shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,171.52. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay-neuter program, $52. The amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $157.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $607.98. The total state, county, and local revenues, $6,589. There are two.
Vouchers?
Yeah, so I certify for the vouchers of April 2022, number 28973 to 29097, processed in the month of April. Our accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. I hereby certify the vouchers, number 29098 to 29235, processed in the month of May 2022, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. There is an amended amendment to Resolution Number 30 that was voted on at the last meeting, May 25th. The resolution accepting the name Old Sycamore Lane for the Common Drive located within Sycamore Acres subdivision at Yance Road. This resolution will be amended with the date for the planning board granting final approval was on October 18th, 2021, and the correction to the owner's name was, it was misspelled. So the owner's name is corrected as well, and that will be added into this meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. And I will second that. All in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Is that on mute?
Okay, and we just want to let you know, you're looking at the monthly finances. And to thank the folks at the recycling center, we've given them more work. If you look at the clerk's report, you see a lot of the clerk's fees are related to the garbage collection there. And so we are able to bring in more revenue because of that. We are preparing. I'm sure you've been watching the news. We're preparing for slowdown in some of our revenues, our mortgage tax revenues and our sales tax revenues, some of which related to interest rates and slowing real estate transactions. If you've been following along, last week was the lowest number of mortgage originations in 22 years. So how quickly times have changed with the higher interest rates. I think the 30-year mortgage is now up to 6.3%. Amazing how fast that's moved. And of course, that will depress mortgage taxes that we use to help balance our budgets. But we're preparing for that and monitoring the budget all along, and we'll be able to adjust accordingly. Same is true for sales taxes. Sales taxes, we're monitoring that as well. Some of the reductions are a result of policy changes at the county level. You know, we share a small percentage of our sales tax revenue that's collected by the county to programs to not charge sales tax on clothing $110 or less and to cap the taxes on gasoline will have some impact on our revenues as well. So just to know that we're keeping our belts tight and will probably be making them tighter as we go forward. Okay, at this time, we can move over to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Any public comment? Would you like to raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment? That's you, Tom. You're raising your hand. Okay. You look like you're muted, though. Do you want to unmute yourself now? I know you were unmuted before, but now you have to unmute yourself. Down at the bottom left would be something that looks like, there you go. Oh, no. Try it again. Want to test it out, Tom?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, and we can hear you now.
Okay.
Well, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting. My comment was concerned, probably we'll discuss it later, is about this roadway here on Fruit Bud. I do have some comments about that, but I think I'd rather hear this whole thing out first and then make some comments and suggestions, if that's okay.
That is absolutely fine, Tom, but I want to let you know it's not on the agenda for tonight.
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda for tonight, so we won't be discussing it. We applied for a grant a couple of months back to help with the costs associated with doing a connector. For the folks at home who maybe didn't see that meeting, on Fruit Bud, where the parking lot is on Rec Park East, there's a small portion of Fruit Bud that the town intends to provide some delineation between where the cars and the bikes should be as they approach Linden Avenue and then ultimately cross over to the Rec Park West. Excuse me, and we've been working with the county on what they would like to see as far as crossing to get from one park to the other. And so what the engineers have proposed is that we consider having a slightly elevated paved area with some demarcation and at least to define the portion of the pavement that should be used for those particular activities. So that said, Tom, take it away. What would you like to tell us?
Well, okay, I saw your picture. Thank you for sending it to me. My concern is, I've been living here for 17 years, and I've never seen that street in a situation of major congestion. I do realize it would be good to have a sidewalk on that street for the safety of people walking between the two parks. However, widening it to the width that you're thinking about widening this thing, I think it's like a thoroughfare. It's really large. And I don't think we really necessarily have to go that wide. I think a good-sized sidewalk of five feet or maybe a little bit more would be sufficient and would take care of all traffic, pedestrian traffic, and even bicycle traffic going up to Linden Avenue. And then having a proper crossing there, I think we had discussed when I saw you Tuesday, the last, I think it was Monday, I'm sorry, I saw you, a blinker light with the zebra lines going across the street and then continuing the walkway on the other side, I think is fine. But to make our little country road there a superhighway for people, pedestrian, I don't think is really necessary. I don't think it needs to be that wide. And it's going to create all types of engineering feats over there. I've been talking to the neighbors who are all there, and they're really concerned about the flooding, the possibility of flooding, because the one house, the second house in on the left-hand side there, he has a flooding issue, and that has to be addressed because of the downgrade of the property and the way the property falls, goes in there. So I think that is really my concern or people's concern, but I think the overall aesthetic of making such a large thing takes away the beauty of the country street. And I don't think we need to do that so much because you have several years ago, which I thought was an excellent idea, we made from Park, I think it's Park View or Park Drive, all the way down to the Rec Park, the sidewalk there. I think that was a great idea, but that was five feet wide.
Yeah.
Can't we not just continue the same thing on that side of the street rather than enlarge this thing? Because people have to come down with their bicycles, their strollers, whatnot, wheelchairs, everything to enter into the park that way if they're coming in from the village.
Yeah.
The town, yeah.
So, Tom, what I would say to you is that the engineers haven't really made a specific recommendation. They're going to do some surveying out there and figure out how much they need to add to which side of the paved areas in order to accommodate. What you'll likely see perhaps is that the portion of the roadway dedicated for auto may actually narrow, and then there'll be a portion that will be added to the remainder to accommodate multimodal. The difference between what you see down at from Park to Rec Park, and we've had some criticism, actually, that was done, you know, many years ago, but some folks don't find that that's safe for their children to bike. You know, sidewalks are supposed to be for walkers and strollers and wheelchairs, as you indicated. So a multimodal path, which is wider, will accommodate safely all of those uses and get them away from the auto. So what I told Steve Slattery, and I'll tell you, is that when the time comes, we're going to meet with all the owners, we're going to go through any of the engineering requirements necessary and work with the residents to figure out how to best accommodate, you know, safely getting, because that's what we need to do. We need to get the kids who are on bikes from one side to the other safely and yet work with those very few landowners on that.
When will, when will that, when are they going to have a report to you people? When do you think that report will be given to you?
If I had to guess, it's sometime late in the fall. We might hear about the grant in the fall. We can keep you posted. And I mentioned this to Steve, that once we, you know, we know what's happening with the grant and when, you know, we are looking to move forward, then we'll have a meeting with all the landowners and discuss, you know, what the recommendation looks like and any concerns they have. This is what we did, by the way, with the sidewalk that we built here, I guess, back in 2016, 17 is my first couple of years. We met with all the landowners along the way to find out what they wanted as far as bushes, you know, that kind of thing. So we'll be doing all of that, but initially, we're taking a look at how we can best and safely and affordably connect people and younger people and people outside of vehicles from one parking lot over to the other.
Okay.
More to come. Lots more to come on that.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Have a wonderful evening.
You too, now. Bye-bye.
Okay, bye. All right. Next, oh, we have our public hearing. So, Deanna, would you be kind enough, we're going to read and open the public hearing and then adjourn it until July, but let's go ahead and go forward with that, shall we, Deanna?
Notice of public hearing, please take, Town of Red Hook, please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Red Hook on June 14th, 2022, at 7:35 PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed franchise renewal agreement between Town of Red Hook and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Incorporated. Spectrum has submitted an application to construct and operate a cable television system within the Town of Red Hook and has requested a grant by the town board of a non-exclusive franchise. The town board has the authority to grant that said franchise pursuant to Town Law 647 after holding a duly noticed public hearing that affords the public the opportunity to provide comment. The town board has determined that pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C7, the proposed franchise renewal agreement constitutes a Type II action as defined under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA. The meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at www redhook.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTV23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhook.org and 845-758-4606 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note franchise renewal agreement in the subject. Written comments may be dropped in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the town hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. Sorry. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email name and telephone number to townclerk@redhook.org by 4 o'clock PM on the day of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated May 25th, 2022, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing, or I'd like to open the public hearing, rather.
Second.
All in favor? I don't know that we need all that, but Jacob Testa, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Very good. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, and for the folks at home, just so you know, we contract with the cable company, internet provider, Spectrum Charter, whatever the name is at the current moment. And they have a franchise in our community. They pay fees for it. So when you're paying your bill, the Town of Red Hook gets 5% under the previous agreement and under what's being proposed now, 5% of that, which helps to reduce the costs that we have in the municipality. So you can think of your bill as, you know, assisting in keeping the budgets in check here as well. It's not a huge amount of money, but everything helps. So, all right, we have no comments at this time. I'd like to, since we're waiting to get something back from Spectrum, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing until our July 12th meeting, hopefully. That'll give us enough time. They've indicated the end of the month will be back to us.
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel.
And, Mr. Supervisor, could you state a time certain for that, please, for an extended public hearing?
7:35. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
I forgot Jacob smiling. I forgot Jacob.
Aye.
Jacob, I should have a little thing next to me.
There are just so many people to remember. Change all the time.
Okay, thank you. Folks, I'm thinking, because the housing needs, I'm going to go through that study that I and others were on the county thing. That's going to be a somewhat lengthy presentation. I'm thinking maybe we should just jump to Agenda Item Number Two, which is an amended resolution on the COVID Cares Act funding. And Number Three and Four, and then come back and do housing at the end. Is that okay? This way, we can help people get to sleep later on in the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Very good. So, that being said, first of all, the first item we have is a resolution. Deanna, I apologize. What number is this, please?
36.
36. It's authorizing the application for farm labor housing project under the Community Development Block Grant, New York CDBGCV Fund. And for the folks at home, if you haven't been following along, there were some leftover COVID monies. There was a program designed specifically for improving housing conditions of farm workers. And so with the start of the EDC, the town's EDC, we thank them very much for their work. They brought that to our attention and did a lot of the initial work to get this going. And we did hear back from community renewal that they would like to have an entity that has a lot of experiencing and administering housing programs to do this. And so I've been working with Hudson River Housing, and I'm pleased to report that not only are they interested, but DCR has indicated that we have to go ahead to move forward with the million-dollar application, 950,000 of which would go directly towards improving those housing conditions and approximately $50,000 to Hudson River Housing for administering the program and also doing the grant application. So many thanks to all involved. And so we have this Resolution Number 36 dated June 14th. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Christine got in there, no? Okay, any further discussion, folks, about this?
Well, and what you just said is not necessarily the final split, right? I'm unclear that.
Yeah.
That's right.
Sorry?
Well, usually, the project managers are allowed more than 5% for project administration, so that I just want to check that. That's the right number for them, because $50,000 seems quite low for the application and administering almost a million dollars of funding.
Well, that's what they've agreed to. So that's what we've got, you know, for the application components, the budget components.
Well, that doesn't mean it can't change before the application goes in. That's what I'm just saying. I think we should, I just, you know, want to make sure we check all the allocations and make sure it makes sense.
Okay. Fine.
I'm happy. I'm very happy that Hudson River Housing is interested and has agreed to work with us on the project.
They have, and for that fee amount, but that's fine. I mean, if they need to, you know, propose a change, we can take that up at another time. But I think that's what we put in the initial two-pager for DCR was a 5% administrative and project manager. 5% administrative and project manager, but yeah, we're very grateful to them for stepping up. They're excited about it. This is the first project like this for farm labor that they've done. And obviously for us, it's an exciting project to work on a component of our important farms that we don't necessarily get involved with. Any other comments, anybody? Okay, so there's some, still some program specifics to work out, but let's move forward. We have about forty-two days left to make the grant application. All in favor, Jacob Testa.
Hi.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
And Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Next up is approving the procedures for video conferencing. We had the procedures. Here they are. Any questions, any comments on this, folks? Are we ready to, we can always amend this in future. Just as a reminder, what it means is that a majority of the members need to be in a public place or a place where the public can access when we are doing these remote meetings.
And Mr. Supervisor, if I could just note as well, remembering that this set of procedures will go into effect after the current emergency expires.
Just was going, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
And we don't know when that is, yeah.
We do know. We just checked and it was posted recently today. And so it has been extended to July 14.
Okay.
Okay.
So we keep checking every month and it keeps getting extended, but at some point it won't be.
Right.
Okay, this, any questions or comments, folks? All right, if not, this is resolution thirty-seven dated. Well, it says dated May 25. Why don't we change that? June 14. Proving procedures for video conferencing, because this was prepared for the previous meeting.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so as amended, resolution thirty-seven and ISO move.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Okay. All in favor, Jacob Testa.
Hi.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Bill Hamel. Okay. Next up. So, this is just beginning conversation. For the folks at home, grant season seems to be 12 months a year here at your local government, but there are particular times of the year where it's even busier. And the state grants tend to be due. Applications tend to be due in June and July. This year it's at the end of July. It was a partial rollout of the consolidated funding programs. It doesn't seem to be as comprehensive as in previous years. We received some correspondence on it. Some of the things that we've discussed and give it some more thought, because we'll need to, in our next three meetings, sort of pin these things down, but some of the things we've discussed is some studies to get grant funding, to do a feasibility study now that the sewer system is being installed in the commercial district in the village. What it would take to extend it down towards Hannaford so that those commercial properties could build out in such a way that it won't impact water quality. We're also looking at the potential for getting some money to revisit our comprehensive plan. And so that might be something to to consider, and then also a water quality improvement grant for potentially a new replacement salt shed, our salt shed is starting to show deterioration, and so will need to be addressed in the next few years. And so we want to get ahead of that, and so we may maybe looking to to have an application for that, and that's a costly endeavor as well. Here's a chart that Ty and Bond, I've asked in previous years and this year as well, to prepare for us and to highlight maybe some of the programs we might consider. And so board members, I know you have lots of things that you would like to accomplish, so if there's more in here that you think we should be applying for, let's hash it all out. We've got a meeting coming up on the 22nd, but certainly by our July meeting, I think the first meeting, we want to have a good idea of what we're applying for, so we can take a couple of weeks for those applications. Does that sound good? Any, any questions we have at the moment? Okay. Very good, so. That said, let's jump back to housing needs. If you give me one moment, I have to get to a different document here. Folks at home, the county arranged for a study group members of which were chosen from different parts of the county to look at housing needs, Duchess County. And to come up with some initial recommendations. There's a fair amount of data in this document, which is sixty pages long. We're not going to go through everything that's mentioned in the document, but I thought I would highlight just maybe one or two things on each page. There's the composition of the folks that were on the group. Lots of folks from county planning, but also people out in the community involved with housing. You see there's somebody from Hudson River Housing as well. Real estate people, developers, a good broad range of folks involved. This document is already available on our website. The summary. Highlighting some of the main points is that there's a definite shortage of housing for folks in the $35,000 to $50,000 household income range. And I should tell you that the study was conducted mostly prior to the pandemic, so obviously there have been some changes since then. But let's talk about what, what the study showed as far as what, what's already occurring. One of the things that we know from our census and once the correction is made to our census figures, it will reinforce what this tells us, which is there's actually been a very slow growth in population in Duchess County. The population is changing, however, the demographics of it. And over the next 20 years, the projections are that net new households are likely to be small. But in the composition will be different. You'll see that like some of us, Duchess County is aging. There are, there seems to be a bigger role for large housing complexes, define that as complexes with 20 units or more, especially for rentals. We have no properties in the town of Red Hook that are 20 units or more, so that's something you know, think about. Values and rents have been rising, vacancies are low. Part of the problem, as we all know, is that incomes have lagged behind the cost for renters. And so, and they are experiencing other increasing costs. There's pressure on the market also from the upper end, which is the growth of higher income households has put pressure on the real estate market as well. The summary is that in order to get to where we should be right now, there should be what they call interventions. Some action that's taken to catch up to the need, 2,155 interventions, so that could be improving vacant properties and putting them on the market. That could be vouchers, that could be construction. And they're looking over a 20-year period to try to catch up. That would be about 108 interventions per year, and we'll get to more of what they're discussing down the document. And there are some of the possibilities if the county were to establish a housing trust fund, and I know that some monies have been allocated just recently in the budget that's proposed by the county exec for housing initiatives. Money that was previously allocated towards the baseball stadium is now going into housing, and so when they identify how they want to, what programs, what types of incentives. But here are some of the options, subsidies, inclusionary policies, assisting with mortgages, housing vouchers, there already are housing vouchers in Duchess County. There could be an increase for that. So let's see a few more. Let's go to the actual market conditions. Part one. Okay. Conditions. All right, here's, here's the stats for those of you who like numbers. If you look on the chart here, population, you see how the growth really was in the 50s and 60s and to some extent the 70s in Duchess County and much of the Hudson Valley. Households, the number of households have increased much smaller in size. You see the change in the last 20 years in the number of households, approximately 10 or 11% of population. Not as much. Aging population since 2000, a key trend has been the aging of its population. The number of children, we know this from our school district and other school districts, the number of children has declined substantially. Look at those population age groups. Employment. Economic and income growth. But it's actually lagging when compared to the nation. And I thought these were some interesting statistics, whereas the employment changing, you see, if you follow the the path here for manufacturing, you see what a substantial decline it is, less than half of the jobs in the last 20 years or so with increase, as I'm sure we've seen healthcare and social assistance. And that's, I guess, to be expected if we're having a population that's aging. Housing supply. Seventy percent of folks in Duchess County own the homes that they live in. That hasn't changed in the last 20 years or so. What we have seen, however, is the larger rental developments mostly is what has been built recently in the last 10 or 15 years. And so that housing type has increased substantially. All data, as soon as you print the report, becomes a little stale. So we'll try to update you as best as possible. But you see the change in median value of owner occupied units. Median sale price, this is something we're familiar with here. In Red Hook, we track the median sale price of a home in Duchess County. What's in this report is the 2020 figure and the report was generated right before the 2021 figure came out. That is now 375,000, so there's a substantial increase. And if you look historically, what transpired from 2012 to, let's say, 2019, very modest increases in the sale prices. So the number of sales are increasing as well. Although, as I mentioned earlier tonight, we could possibly see that slowdown with the dramatic increase in both prices and mortgage rates. Vacancy rates, here's the line for vacancies. There's the trend for rents. I think we all know that the housing market has really tightened here in Duchess County. So they looked at the income of the households and their ability to afford homeownership and, and or to rent. And what you see is that the the incomes once again are lagging. But those with higher incomes are able to more easily afford to live in Duchess County, so you have opposite trends happening at the same time. And here's probably the most interesting chart, I think, is that when we talk about housing shortage, the number of units that are needed on the lower end is something that we've been anticipating. But we also need more units on the upper end because there's not only a reaching up, but there's a pulling down where folks who have higher incomes are taking some of the housing stock that could go to those who make less income. And you see it here by these two columns, you see the deficit is greatest in the 100,000 plus and then in the less than 20,000. It has a deficit of rental units matched to households with incomes at or above 75,000. There is a surplus of units affordable to the income ranges 35 to 75,000. So what that means is that people in different income levels are taking housing that would perhaps go to folks in the middle. The good news is the majority, seventy two percent of Duchess County owners did not face a cost burden, meaning they did not pay more than thirty percent of their income towards housing. The ones that did had incomes under fifty thousand. But some of them also had incomes of seventy five thousand or more. The proportion is rising in every income category, however, in the last twenty years. So it's not housing shortage is not exclusive to just those in the lower and higher. Okay, some more charts to speak about the renters. There's the median versus. Again, once looking at the income. They studied those with higher education and incomes. Not quite sure. The relevance necessarily of why we need that stat, but.
Robert, I, I watched the webinar that the county put on for this, and I was also confused about it just reading the report. But I think it's that more people with higher educational levels have been moving into the county over the past twenty years. And so that's accounting for some of that pressure at the higher end.
That's correct, yeah. Okay, so let's talk about the submarkets, specifically what's happening in our area. And so they grouped Red Hook with Rhinebeck. And what was interesting. Is that. It's not, it's not consistent throughout the county. But you do see. That. In Red Hook and Rhinebeck, there is a deficit in those both the lower quintile and the upper quintile. And in the middle, there is a surplus of units, interestingly enough. When you look at. You know, by income here. Obviously, when it comes to renters, there are more cost burden renters than owners. That's only logical. But you see that the. More burdened ones are on the lower income threshold. By nominal and percentage terms. With ownership. I thought this was interesting. There's a surplus of units on the upper end. In the Red Hook Rhinebeck area. So that's something that's maybe unique to certain parts of the county. You take a look at the graph here. And then a deficit in the other. On the ownership. So there is. As it was reported in a few pages earlier. There is pressure and shortages. Unaffordable. Homes to, to purchase in the area and the median area. Number of cost burdened owners. And the percentage. Pretty high. We talk about mortgage trades, we talk about taxes, all, all of which go into. The calculations. There's the summary of what we've discussed. The vast majority of renter households with income below fifty thousand or cost burden as of twenty nineteen. And I think we know both anecdotally and, and. If these, the data was. You know, if it was taken into account, the latest ACS. Community survey would show that rents have gone up fairly significantly over the last couple of years. During the pandemic, as we had. Folks. Moving from other parts of the country.
Uh, Robert?
Yeah.
Can you just scroll back up to that previous page? I just wanted to point out in that last paragraph. Where it says some households with annual incomes below fifty thousand are likely chronically poor. Others are working full time or living on retirement income. So, and then with the earlier demographics of the growth in. Segments of the population over fifty five, I think it said. And so, you know, I just want, we, we do need to look at. Or, you know, retirement income as opposed to working income in, in addressing this. And, you know, like you're saying, if people want to downsize. Out of a larger house, but there's nowhere smaller or affordable for them to go. Then, you know, people at upper incomes could potentially take those larger houses. But, you know, they're not available because the, you know, potentially retired senior citizens are still in them because there's no options for them.
Right. And that's a good segue to. The next parts of, of the study, but the key takeaways. Missing product at high and low ends, more housing could help more money into the hands, especially of renters. And. Interventions. That we need to take action in order to improve the situation for our residents.
And Robert, could I, um, there was another thing that was clarified in the webinar that I thought came through more clearly there than in the written report, which was that. The market is better equipped to take care of adding supply at that higher end of the, of the income. You know, the, the sort of housing market threshold, whereas at the, the, how the. The economic market will not take care of the need at the lower end of the housing market. And so it's not like, like someone asked the question in the webinar, are you suggesting that we have policy interventions aimed at providing more kind of high end luxury housing? There was no, right? That will, will take care of itself. It's really that we want to focus on those folks in greater need.
Well, unless those policies are to try to streamline, you know, development where you want it. Because, you know, some of the criticisms you hear, it takes too long to get a development approved or, or what have you. But certainly not incentivizing to the extent that you would provide any type of tax breaks or vouchers for sure, sure. Yeah.
Hey, Robert.
Yeah.
First, I want to thank you for getting Red Hook and you for participating in this project. On getting a voice for our municipality, but I have a question. And it involves the statistics that were developed. How were, how was the county able to differentiate? Homeowners between those are full time residents. And those that are sec, whose homes are second homes, that are second homeowners. Because the Hudson Valley as a whole, not just in Duchess, but Columbia and Ulster and Green. Has, for good reason, a great many second homes, country houses for, for people. And those tend to be wealthier people.
Yeah, you know, it's all that I. You can look at where they got the stats for each one of the data points, Bill. I think a lot of it comes from the American community surveys. But you can take a look and, and see for yourself how, how they handle that. I'm not really sure.
Okay, because it's just, you know, statistically, it, it actually is an important number.
Well, it, it is. And actually, it's going to be discussed as we get further down. They, they, they talk about second homes.
Okay.
So housing needs for tomorrow. This is really what kind of we're interested in. It's good to know where you are, take a snapshot. But, you know, make some assumptions, try to figure out where you're going with no intervention. And then take a look at some alternatives. And so they looked at breaking it out into the six types. Under sixty five and sixty five plus. And so here are some of the assumptions. What if the trend continues the way it's going? What if we grow faster if, you know, the suburban. Trend makes its way up here, the tide gets higher and higher. And what if the traditional notions of household formation change? And you'll see what they mean by that as we progress. Okay. Here again, what we've seen over the last decade, senior households grew by twenty nine percent. While households, and I think this is the most important statistic, if you could. Choose one is households under sixty five declined by seven percent. Here we go again. Two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, married with kids, no kids, single parents, single living alone. The four different types of householders under sixty five. Essentially a decline. When you tally them together, households over sixty five. Increasing. Fairly significantly. And then you take a look at the change in income. Not, not very dramatic, except when you look at. You know, the under sixty five. Rent and ownership again. Significant ownership. Where the household, it's obvious where there are more people in the household. You're going to have more income, whether it's retirement or, or active total number of households. Barely change. Again, those three assumptions, they, for faster growth. They propose what if Duchess were to grow at Westchester County's recent rates? And under that faster growth, it would occur evenly across all age groups. The other scenario is that the county continues to experience modest population loss. And continues to age. And this is projected by Cornell Center for Applied Demographics. Part of that assumption. My browser here is that we talked about different family formations of the, that we may see an increase in intergenerational. And non-family households. I, a roommate. Who wants to be my roommate here? Okay. If trends continue, and I thought this was. Really eye opening, under sixty five households, look at that. Look at that decline. Look at the increase in. Sixty five plus. So when we're talking about, you know, having a nice balance. Having, you know. Young families in our community. To replenish the energy that. Each community needs generationally to have new families be created. It's, it's sort of. Eye opening. If the population grows faster than expected. Still. Fighting against the. The aging demographic. And if. Household formations change. In characteristic still. Average incomes doesn't seem to be. Very different in any of the quintiles, with the exception really of the very first one here. So when you talk about the importance of having, you know, families with kids in your community. Also know that from an income standpoint, that tends to be higher as well. And the ownership model doesn't seem to change all that much. Under these assumptions. Only in the third assumption does the household size increase again, we're talking about intergenerational and, and folks sharing a home together. And still lots of growth projected in over sixty five. So when we talk about preparing for the future. I know that we, you know, what twelve years ago had a senior housing development approved and built. Just know that all of these scenarios project that we're going to have a significant increase in that demographic population. Talking about once again, the intervention in order to catch up to where we want to have. A better match with supply and demand in each one of the income groups. So this is, this is interesting. The projections is that Duchess County is unlikely to experience housing pressures as a result of growth in households. So it's more about what's happening with the income. And the mismatch between the housing stock. The housing types and those that are in those housing types. So as, as Bill, you referenced. The big houses, one or two people still living in a big house that may be a better match. As far as demand would be for. You know, more individuals in those larger structures. They talk about interventions of about a hundred and eighty a year, it'd be modest, but it would still be significant. And then we get to the, the part we're interested in is what, what kind of. Strategy, what kind of action can we take? Again, the interventions. And they were thinking in, in terms of how do you? If you were to have a countywide strategy, how would you try to? Meet the demand and the needs.
Robert, can you go back just one page for a second?
Regional basis, sure, sure.
Because this, the, the interventions is an interesting term and. It, this slide I thought was useful. It's really aimed primarily, I thought, at rentals. And households with incomes less than fifty thousand dollars. That helped me understand what it was with they, you know, that they were focusing on when they were talking about. Putting numbers on these interventions.
Right. And I don't think, we, we don't want to give the impression it's just that demographic, just that population. But yes, the majority of. The individuals within this income bracket. In rentals or cost burn. So yes, that is the greatest demand. That. The existing conditions suggest and quite possibly moving forward, there'll be even more pressure. Yep. And so they took a look at how. What type of goals you might want to shoot for. On a regional basis. And then if you look at Red Hook Rhinebeck. Over twenty years, could we have eight interventions? Could we create eight housing situations each year? A hundred and sixty for the town of Red Hook over the course of the next twenty years. A hundred and sixty for the town of Red Hook over the course of the next twenty years. Seems reasonable. And again, that's their fair share approach. And then we talk about the tools and the toolkit. Obviously, identifying where you would like to have more housing, if that's one of the tools. And how you can update your land use in order to encourage more housing to meet that demand. And again, just to note, we have, we do have five trailer parks in our community. But but we don't have a rental property with twenty units or more anywhere in the township. So one of the tools would be again, county establishing a housing trust fund. And some of the things that they could use those dollars for to assist local communities to help purchase properties. As you know, they're in discussion now about acquiring a transitional housing property. And then we talk about infrastructure, right? Something we know we need to finish here in our community so that we can accomplish these goals. Rehabilitation. Okay, something I think we've mentioned before. We've talked about incentive zoning, how we have it to encourage some funding for open space preservation, but we could modify our incentive zoning to require a developer, the next big development, if you will, in our community to reserve some of those units to be affordable in exchange for the bonus density that they get with our incentive zoning provision. And we could provide some subsidies for units to be created in a mixed use situation. Helping folks with their mortgages, more housing vouchers. I thought it was an interesting stat that two and a half percent in essence of the households already have federally funded housing vouchers. Tax exemption policies, you know, that's a little bit trickier for us on a local level because that really has to come with state approval. So one of the appendix appendices in the report I thought was interesting, this table here. And if you look, it's really a good lesson in how you can't go off of the median, because if you look at the median affordable rent versus the median rent in two thousand nineteen, median house price versus the median affordable house price, you see there almost exactly the same. Now granted, things have changed over the last couple of years. But all this echoes is that it's quite possible that the number of housing types that we have may not be far off. But the way it's matching with the demand and the households occupy those units has a lot to say about our shortage. You look back in two thousand and ten. The median. Especially with homeownership. The income was not sufficient. That has changed. And here we are all the way back in two thousand and you see the bottom of the screen there. That actually back then, and if you've been around since then, you would know this. Back then, rents were quite a bit cheaper. And it wasn't such a strain to afford a home here in the town. So here are some of the factors going into the assumptions, Bill. So you may want to take a look at that closely to go through some of the stats and where they were pulled from. And of course, any type of projection is just that a product of protection.
Hey, Robert, was there any discussion? The interventions that are referred to in this document are pretty standard, I guess. And was there any discussion about particularly on a county level of, you know, looking at things, for instance, like community land trusts that own the property or they, you know, ensures the affordability, they own the properties and then sell them. And there's a cap on how much people can sell for, and they get the property back, etc. Was there any discussion of anything like that? That was, you know, more recent or newer techniques on affordability?
Yeah, you know, you see the land trust option, land banking option. And you see that more in the urban areas. Kingston has one.
Well, I think it started in Vermont. They were, they're not very, they're fairly rural.
I'm sorry, I just mean in the valley. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see it more there. I mean, you see it more on a local level. But yes, there was some discussion about that. But not, not a lot.
Yeah.
Not, not a lot. So that is something that we could also consider as part of our you know, our process. Some of the folks who were interviewed to to get input and again, just to underscore that there was a, you know, a fairly good broad representation. The folks involved in in the study group and and good consultants, they did a very nice job working with with us. So first, thank you for your patience as I sort of went on and on there, but I thought it was important for the folks at home to get a really good indication of where we are. Because here you can hear talking to your friends and neighbors, what's going on in the community, and that's very valuable. It's hard to get a comprehensive data-driven view of things. And so I think this this study is helpful. And it helps us understand demographically, for sure, what's happening in our community. And as we talk about what we want for our residents, you know, we we now have maybe a better sense of of what's been occurring. So as far as next steps, would you give some thought to some of the recommendations, you know, and we'll think about whether or not we feel we need to constitute a a group of individuals to sort of do a local version of this? Or if you feel like we've got enough data there, both on a county level and on a regional Red Hook Ryan Beck level. So that we can continue this discussion maybe at our next meeting and see how we want to approach things. Okay.
Robert, I had one other question. You raised the fact that we have five mobile home parks in Red Hook.
Yes, sir.
And when you were working on the on the group and your discussions, mobile home residents sort of straddle both worlds between being a homeowner and being a renter. Because they may own the structure that they live in, but they rent the property that it sits on. And it represents some unique challenges for for those individuals. Was there any discussion about that issue?
Not not specifically, you know. Not specifically. It it is a unique animal, mobile home parks. And I just want to say that, you know, it isn't necessarily true that the individual in the mobile home is the owner of that mobile home. There are parks that are owned both. The park and the units are owned by by a landlord. How they're treated taxation-wise and so on is, you know, part of that tax incentive aspect that that you saw in the report, the same is kind of true of of condominiums and co-ops, they're treated differently for tax purposes than single-family housing, multifamily housing, same thing, treated differently. But all of that is important when we think about how we want to meet that demand, because at the end of the day, we're not doing it just to accommodate any old person. We're doing it to make sure that we have the right. You know, that we have the foundation that we can have, you know, the the people who work for us, who volunteer for our fire companies, that they, you know, the the police, the teachers, that they can afford to live in this community, because we hear more and more how that's becoming difficult. So yeah, we'll need to look at all those housing types and see if, you know, what's what's a good recipe to to ensure that we have options for all of them, because we'll never know what what one family desires necessarily, but we want to make sure that we give them the greatest chance of having the opportunity to live in this community. How was that for a long-winded answer to your question? Okay. It's eight fifty-eight. That, I believe, is the final item on the agenda for tonight. We are going to go in by audio and do an attorney-client session with your approval, folks. So at this time, I would like to say good night to everyone, stay healthy, be happy. And at this time, I make a motion to go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor of Christine Kane?
Hi.
Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Good night, everyone. If you would turn on. Okay, folks, we're back from our attorney-client session. It's nine thirty-four. At this time, I would like to introduce a resolution. The resolution is to authorize commencement of litigation regarding code violations at the apparently abandoned and vacant property known as Twenty-One Harvard Street. And I will put that resolution up on the screen. For the folks at home, this is the same property where there was a shooting several years ago. Where it is in College Park.
Robert, I don't know if this is significant, but it's dated June fifteen and we're still tuned fourteen.
We sure.
We are. We should barely.
We can make that fairly. Well, it's not that bad.
Jump the gun.
Just stay on the meeting for another couple hours.
Yeah, it's correct in the minutes. It's not correct on the front page. That's the only place.
Good catch. Thanks for the typo.
Thank you.
All right, very good. For the folks who are in College Park, I think they'll be happy to hear that there's finally some movement in trying to correct this situation, a very difficult one from the town's perspective and trying to get corrected to reach the owner of the property. And you all have been very patiently waiting for something to happen. And so hopefully you'll start to to see some improvements there in the short term. Okay. Resolution. Gosh, I don't have the end here now to tell me which.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight it is. Day the June fourteenth as corrected, an ISO move. Is there a second?
Second.
Christine Kane. Christine, apparently you're in charge of all seconds. Any further discussion, folks? Okay, and I know that we are working on other properties in that development and elsewhere in the town to make sure that the code violations are corrected. Okay, all in favor of Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
And who did I forget? Julia Solomon? I got it all right. Okay, folks, at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All right. Good night, everyone. Stay healthy.
Good night.
All in favor, Jacob Pesta?
Hi.
Julia Solomon?
Hi.
And myself. Good night all.